We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to your republic, whose it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Fill us with your grace, God, as we make decisions that will affect the borough and the residents in it. God, we also ask that you continue to look over our police department, our firemen, and our emergency response teams, and all branches of the military. Amen.
At this time, I would like to welcome Judge Turner.
Stand in the way, you would have been late.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to...
You just want to introduce your tax collector.
Our tax collector is Robin Anderson. Ready? I recite your name.
I, Robin Anderson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, defend, and uphold
And uphold.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws and ordinances of the Borough of Eddystone.
The laws and ordinances of the Borough of Eddystone.
Perform my duties.
And I'll perform my duties.
As tax collector for the Borough of Eddystone. Integrity and fidelity. So help me God. Congratulations. All right, next we'd like to have Alan Reeves, Jr. Is everybody present? I went to high school with Alan. Alan, did you ever think you'd see this day? Playing lacrosse, drinking beer back on a railroad track. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Alan Reeves, Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, defend, and uphold.
Support, defend, and uphold.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of Pennsylvania.
The laws and ordinances of the Borough of Eddystone.
The laws and ordinances of the Borough of Eddystone.
I will perform my duties.
I will perform my duties.
As the mayor of the Borough of Eddystone.
As the mayor of the Borough of Eddystone.
With integrity and fidelity.
With integrity and fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Alan.
Congratulations, Alan.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Despo Tattasur. Despo, how long you been doing this now?
Two hundred years now.
The reason I say that, I saw it on the Daily Times the other day. It was twenty-five years ago, something like that, ten years ago. Oh my goodness, you still doing this? Punishment, right? You gonna hold five more?
It's been over twenty years.
Marty, how are you? You ready? Aye, please state your name.
I, Despo Tattasur.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, defend, and uphold.
That I will support, defend, and uphold.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws and ordinances of the Borough of Eddystone.
The laws and ordinances of the Borough of Eddystone.
And will discharge my duties as a councilperson for the Borough of Eddystone.
And will discharge my duties as councilwoman for the Borough of Eddystone.
With integrity and fidelity.
With integrity and fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Okay, next we'll have Karen Reeves. Hold the Bible?
Maybe she's got to work after night.
Yeah, really. Okay, you guys are holding the Bible again? Let the animal Bible raise your hand. Repeat after me. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Karen Reeves.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, defend, and uphold.
That I will support, defend, and uphold.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws and ordinances of the Borough of Eddystone.
The laws and ordinances of the Borough of Eddystone.
Discharge my duties.
And will discharge my duties.
As a councilperson of the Borough of Eddystone.
As a councilperson of the Borough of Eddystone.
With integrity and fidelity.
With integrity and fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Just make the checks out, the taxes to the Reeves family. President and Council together. Next we have William Stewart, Jr.
Your Honor, this is my mother, Jo.
Okay, use that Bible, that's good. Use the family Bible, that's good, yeah.
My grandmother Stella Tyson, she served as a committee woman for the township of Ridley for forty-plus years, and unfortunately she passed October a year ago, and in her memory I've asked to be sworn in on her Bible, which is inscribed with the date of her baptism, which was 1931.
Are you ready to go? Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, William G. Stewart, Jr.
I thought it was going to be a smart guy saying, "State your name."
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, defend, and uphold.
That I will support, defend, and uphold.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws and ordinances of the Borough of Eddystone.
The laws and ordinances of the Borough of Eddystone.
And will discharge my duties.
And will discharge my duties.
As a councilperson for the Borough of Eddystone.
As a councilperson for the Borough of Eddystone.
With integrity and fidelity.
With integrity and fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Okay, next I'd like to welcome Beth Gross. New blood, huh? How are you? Misses Beatty, how are you? Okay, gentlemen, you're going to hold the Bible. Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Beth Gross.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, defend, and uphold.
That I will support, defend, and uphold.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws and ordinances of the Borough of Eddystone.
The laws and ordinances of the Borough of Eddystone.
And will discharge my duties.
And will discharge my duties.
As a councilperson for the Borough of Eddystone.
As a councilperson for the Borough of Eddystone.
With integrity and fidelity.
With integrity and fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Good luck to you. You get to sit in the front row. You've got your nameplate and everything ready up there. Next I'd like to welcome Robert Donahue. And you're holding the Bible, huh?
Yep.
Mr. Donahue, say nothing above, raise your hand, repeat after me. Aye.
Aye, Robert Donahue.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, defend, and uphold.
That I will support, defend, and uphold.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws and ordinances of the Borough of Eddystone.
The laws and ordinances of the Borough of Eddystone.
And will discharge my duties.
And will discharge my duties.
As a councilperson for the Borough of Eddystone.
As a councilperson for the Borough of Eddystone.
With integrity and fidelity.
With integrity and fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Yes. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor.
Karen, would you like to come up?
Mr. Mayor.
Any other nominations? This time I ask for a motion for nomination for Officer of Council President.
I'd like to make the motion, Mr. Mayor, to nominate William Stewart, Jr. as President of the Council.
Any other nominations? I'd like...
Well, don't we have to vote on first one or...
Motion made second.
Oh, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Mr. Manager, if we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Patterson.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Ms. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Reeves.
Here.
Ms. Tattasur.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Junior Councilman Gross.
Here.
Mayor Reeves.
Here.
President Stewart.
Here.
This time we'd like to call for nominations for the Office of Vice President of Council.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a nomination, to nominate Karen Reeves as Vice President, Secretary of Council.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. At this time, I'd like to call for nominations for the Office of Pro-Ten for Council.
I'd like to make a motion for Despo Tattasur to hold the position of President Pro-Ten for the Borough of Eddystone.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. We also have an opening in the office for the vacancy board. I'd like to call for nominations for, fill the opening for vacancy board.
I'd like to make a motion for Kelly Buckus to serve as the chairperson of the vacancy board.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. If you'd like to, if you could swear in, Ms. Buckus.
She's going to be President of the vacancy board.
She will be, fill the vacancy board.
Chairperson.
She'll be Chairperson of the vacancy board.
Repeat after me, please. Aye, state your name. Do solemnly swear. That I will support, defend, and uphold. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The laws and ordinances of the Borough of Eddystone. And will discharge my duties as Chairman of the vacancy board. Integrity and fidelity. So help me God. Congratulations.
At this time, Council need to take actions on the vacancies for professional services or the appointments for professional services. I'd seek nominations for the appointment of a Borough Manager, please.
I make a motion to nominate Joseph Pete Pasente, Jr. and Associates Incorporated.
Motion made in seconded for the appointment of Joseph Pete Pasente, Jr. as the Office of Borough Manager. Council, what's your pleasure?
Aye.
Ayes have it. At this time, I'd like to seek a nomination for the appointment of the Borough Treasurer and Secretary.
I make a motion to appoint Tina Torres as Secretary Treasurer for the Borough of Eddystone.
Motion made in seconded, Council, what's your pleasure?
Aye.
Ayes have it. This time, Council needs to make a motion for the appointment of the Borough Solicitor.
I make a motion to nominate Sandy Libery of Prusman and Doyle.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. This time, Council needs to take action on the appointment for a Borough Engineer. If I could have a nomination, please.
I'd like to nominate Chuck Etanian Associates for Borough Engineer. Second.
Motion made in seconded to appoint Chuck Etanian Associates as our Borough Engineer. Council, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Council needs to take action on the appointment of an auditor for the borough. Could I have a nomination for the position of auditor?
I make a motion to appoint John Hannah from Mingus &amp; Kowalski as our auditor slash accountant for the Borough of Eddystone.
Mingus &amp; Kowalski?
Mingus &amp; Kowalski.
Motion made in seconded for the appointment of the Mingus and...
John Hannah of Mingus &amp; Kowalski.
John Hannah from Mingus &amp; Kowalski as the Borough Auditor. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. This time, Borough Council needs to take action on the appointment of a zoning hearing solicitor. Could I have a nomination, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'll make a motion that John F. X. Riley be appointed the zoning hearing solicitor.
Have a motion made in seconded to appoint John F. X. Riley as the solicitor for the zoning hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Council will need to take action on the appointment of a Labor Council. Do I have a nomination, please?
I make a motion to appoint Mike Madren as our Labor Counsel.
Motion made in seconded to appoint Mike Madren as our Labor Counsel for the Borough of Eddystone. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. At this time, Council need to take action on the appointment of an actuary for the police pension plan. Do I have a nomination, please?
I make a motion to appoint Tom Anderson and Associates to be our actuary for the police pension plan.
Anderson?
For the Borough of Eddystone, yes. Tom Anderson.
What's the firm?
Anderson and Associates.
Motion made in seconded to appoint Tom Anderson from Tom Anderson and Associates as the actuary for the police pension plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. This time, Council will need to take action on the appointment of a Police Secretary. Do I have a nomination for Police Secretary?
I make a motion for Kathy Crisak to continue her position as Police Secretary.
Motion made in seconded for Kathy Crisak to continue as the Police Secretary. All in favor?
Aye.
At this, is there any other appointments? At this time, I'm just going to take a very short, two-minute recess, just so that the new members of Council can have an opportunity to get congratulations from their family. Two-minute recess? Meeting back on the record. Public Forum, Tammy Patterson.
Hi, I just had a couple people ask me with the new recycling program that starts tomorrow, if you live in an apartment building and the trash is contracted out, who, how can they recycle? Is there a way? Will the Highway Department go and help for them? Or, I just figured I would ask.
It's considering that, you know, the apartment complexes are traditionally a commercial trash pickup, but the fact that the recycling is actually going to be a commodity that the borough is going to get paid for, if they would like to participate, it's a bring-your-own can program. The only thing we ask is that you've got the can with a lid on it to protect the recyclable materials from the elements. There is the recycled stickers that are available up here at Borough Hall, so if they would like to get a can, put the recycling out on Tuesday, I'll work with Gina from the Highway Department. We can swing down right in front of the apartments and you pick up the recyclable material from them as well. Mr. Dave Williams.
I'm here again in reference to the yarn-soaked house next to me. There's still, nothing has been done. Nothing has been done with soap ever. This is three months going on now that I was told that a company could run there and clean this place and take care of this. Three years I have been fighting this. Three years.
It was my understanding it was already taken care of.
Nothing has been done yet.
I will look into it tomorrow. I will contact you tomorrow afternoon. Soon as I find out, I will let you know.
He went over there, he threw some bleach around, the owner again, and walked out. Nothing at all has been done yet. Nothing.
I will look into it tomorrow morning.
And I appreciate your calling.
I will. I will call you right after I talk to Dallas.
Then, just to make sure we're moving forward, Mr. Williams, is this, we have executed the services agreement with the firm. ATU?
Yes.
So we do have an agreement in place with the borough?
Correct.
And Dave, you've been in contact with Dallas, and he knows the procedure of having to sticker the property?
It was the first one I watched, so I don't know why it wasn't done, but I will find out tomorrow.
So you'll follow up with Mr. Williams?
I don't know what time tomorrow, but I will follow up.
Andrew Walsh.
The members of Council and the community of Eddystone that do not know me, my name's Andrew Walsh. I was elected Fire Chief for the Borough of Eddystone by the membership this year. Just wanted to say hello and introduce myself, and look forward to working with the community of Eddystone and moving forward. If there's a problem, give us a call. We're always happy to help. We've also partnered with Six ABC again this year for the smoke detector program. If anybody needs a smoke detector, please call the firehouse. We have a bunch of stuff in stock for last year, and we're getting a new shipment in in February. We're happy to hook them up where you can install them. If you need smoke detectors, it's a lifesaver.
Andrew, congratulations on behalf of the Council for your election into the Chief of Fire. We look forward to seeing the fire reports from you, I assume, starting this coming month?
I did submit our yearly report in 2013.
Anthony Kenny.
I have a couple of things. I want to see if anything happened with finding out about my neighbor, where is that handicap parking since a couple of months ago?
I've changed position. Can you give me the address again?
Nine oh four, if I'm not mistaken.
Savel?
Yes, nine oh four Savel. He was given a temporary one. It was supposed to be a permanent one, then it was taken away once everything went around.
What's the neighbor's last name?
I don't know his last name, I know that his first name is Chris.
Did you know he filled out an application?
Yes. And he got signatures from all the neighbors before he got, had one.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes, sir.
I can elaborate on that. It's a business between his neighbor. The application was filled. I issued a temporary one in order for him to come up with more documentation required by the Borough Code. I have yet to receive that. If he does have information, contact me and we can issue him the proper permit.
Okay, thank you then. Goes to another thing, same block. Numerous times, I just stopped the officers about a truck, that's a Class III truck that parks overnight on the street. Done it several times. Had several problems with it. Just wanted to see what to do about that. If we can do something about it. I want to stay here and keep calling aisle one every time. They hear me enough already.
I know we have ticketed that vehicle in the past, and we'll continue to ticket it.
And I mean, one more thing. I'm having some problems with the Fire Department. I recently applied several times there, but I would say I don't want them back in. But the problem I'm having is between the hours of operation for the pay crew, it's nothing but them honking the horn out front of my house on Spike. And I would just like to stop. I contacted Cousy when he was the chief. I contacted Dallas. They said they would handle it. They talked to them. I would say did not do nothing about it. I will talk to Andy too.
And I'll contact Bob when he receives the statement. We'll get him to make the call.
Thank you.
Any other public forum? Mr. Wilson.
I just wanted to ask, when you have someone who is a repeat offender on the parking tickets, is there some point where that action gets escalated and that vehicle can just be simply towed away? Because I thought there was something in the Borough Code that had an escalation procedure for that.
I'm not familiar with that section of the code. I'll look into it. I do know that we have a slated vehicle, and it's up to the owner of the vehicle to pay citation or not. If he doesn't pay a citation, it will escalate to a higher fine and go into a traffic citation.
So then you keep a record of, what, the license plate number or the vehicle registration number?
Yes, every time we issue a ticket, we write a report on that incident. We have a description of the vehicle, as well as the parking ticket has a description of the registration plate and a rough description of the vehicle.
So you could do a search and find out how many tickets have been issued to that vehicle. That would be good.
Any other public forum? Before we do adjourn, we'll do a roundtable. Congratulations. Mayor Reeves? Anything for the public?
No.
Councilwoman Patterson.
Just like, congratulations, everybody. And I look forward to... Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Councilwoman Gross, congratulations.
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone for all the support and to know that all the promises made, we will keep. And if you ever have a question or concern, we'll know where I am. You'll have every opportunity to knock at my door, see my car, and stop me if you wish to. And happy new year. But not today.
Councilwoman Tattasur.
Just want to say congratulations to our Council members on their appointments. Congratulations to Kelly Buckus on her vacancy board appointment, and everyone else who was appointed tonight. Thank you to Judge Turner for coming out tonight. And I look forward to working with all the Council members and hope to see better communication in 2013.
Councilman Donahue, congratulations, sir.
I too would like to thank everybody for the support for the whole year. I'd like to thank my family and Courtney for doing this for me today. And I look forward to working with everybody up on this board.
Councilwoman Tattasur.
I'd just like to congratulate everyone, and I also look forward to work with everyone this year. I think we're going to have a good year. And happy new year, everybody.
Thanks, President Reeves.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate everyone up here. Thank you, Judge Turner. I look forward to...
to moving forward, community united, community input, working with the community, being out in the community, and Happy New Year, everyone.
Well, first I wanna thank the members of Council for instilling the confidence in me to elect me as President of this body. Wanted to remind everybody that the recycling program is going to start tomorrow. There's some single-stream recycling, so it's all in one bin. What we do ask is, is that you put the recycled material in its own bin, you know, don't use your trash on Monday and put the same recycling there on Tuesday, it's gotta be a separate bin for recycling. It does have to have a marking that says it is recycling, there are stickers available here for pickup at the Borough. We do have some limited quantity, however, I did get a phone call this afternoon from Councilman Patterson that we will be ordering stickers, enough for everybody that would wanna pick them up. The, some of the goals that I'd like to see us moving forward as a Borough is making sure that we are accessible as a Borough Council to the residents of Eddystone. We're definitely going to be working on a refresh of the Borough of Eddystone website. In months to come, what I'd like to see is an interactive calendar, so that all of the residents would be able to see, not only when we have trash pickup or recycling, or in the event that because of a holiday, we are not going to pick up trash, say, on the Thursday of Thanksgiving, that the residents have that information available to them. Also looking at establishing some email addresses with the BoroughofEddystone.com for the Council members who would like to have an email address, so that residents would be able to reach out to those folks, and also making sure that we've got continuity between the different websites that are out there. We've got, you know, we're a good police department website, we should be able to link those websites together, so if you were to go on the Borough of Eddystone, you could click the link and go right to the Police Department website as well. That's all that I have, yes.
Before we adjourn, I just wanna say, I know that we've got some complaints, you know, through the last snowstorm that we had, I just wanna say, our Highway Department does a fantastic job. And they were out Thursday night into Friday, until 2:00 Friday afternoon, and went home, went to bed, and they came back out on Saturday and cleared our rooms. I know that there was a lot of complaints, I don't do Facebook, and I know that there was a lot of comments being put out there on Facebook. They even said on the news not to throw salt because it was a waste of money because of the temperature being so low. With that being said, if they would've gone out and cleared everything, which is hard to do on a weekend because people are home, that would've turned to black ice, and nobody wouldn't have gotten anywhere. So I just wanna, you know, be a little bit more appreciative, people should be a little bit more appreciative for the resources that we have, these guys do bust their butt, and should be commended for what they do.
That's right.
That's all I wanted to say.
Next Borough Council meeting is Monday, January 13th at 7:00. If I could have a motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.